Call to order this meeting of the Esconaba City Council, September 4th, 2025. Ms. Weiser, please call roll.
Councilmember Bocha?
Here.
Councilmember Dubor?
Here.
Councilmember Flock?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Mayor Yama?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time seeking approval and/or corrections to the minutes of the regular meeting of August 21st, 2025.
So we'll...
Second.
Oh, just not so fast. I did notice a couple corrections that need to be made. I didn't bring my copy with me, but if I remember correctly, the sale of the property, the first motion was defeated, that one looked correct. But then the second motion that was made, I think it listed Karen and Todd. But wasn't it?
Me and you.
Yeah, it was you two. Yeah, okay, one, yeah. So that needs to be corrected. And then whatever the agenda item was right after that, the motion was made and roll call only shows two, two names after that, and I don't recall which two, instead of all of us. If anyone has a copy of the minutes with them?
I do not.
I do. So it was two property items, just to...
Yep, the first motion failed, the second one. The motion was made by, I believe, yeah.
Mr. Dubor?
Mr. Dubor. Second one, it shows Moore moved, Flock seconded for the counter.
Yeah, that's not correct.
Correct. I think it was Dubor moved, Flock seconded, was that it?
I, I thought so, but it might have been me.
I thought it was Bocha, I thought I made Bocha seconded.
But then the next agenda item, it only lists, whatever that item was, it only lists two names under the roll call vote or the eyes. Is that correct? Instead of listing everyone?
For some new business item two, which was the next item, there was no motion, it was only discussion. Then there's the substation.
Skip, skip down a little bit then. There was one where...
Oh, yes, it only shows the mayor on it. Correct. That should reflect everybody.
All of us, yeah. Thank you.
Good catch, Mr. Bocha. Motion to approve the agenda with the corrections to the previous agenda.
So...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. At this time seeking approval and/or adjustments to the current agenda as written.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, is there any conflict of interest needing to be declared by members of council pertaining to items on the agenda?
I will disclose again that regarding the South 32nd Street property items, I do live on that street.
Thank you. Further conflicts of interest needing to be declared by members of council? This time we move on to brief public comment. If you wish to make comment pertaining to items on the agenda, please approach the podium, state your name, place of residence, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Good evening, I'm Ed Legault, I'm the Executive Director for the Delta County Economic Development Alliance. The two items are both sale of city property for housing development. The biggest economic things that we have that we're trying to spur are business attraction, business growth, and talent attraction. The biggest hindrance to meeting those goals are lack of housing in the area. You have an opportunity to become developmental partners with people that are willing to build stock here. And once that's built, you'll see other, other property become available. But I, I just think that developers are going to look to come here. Your city manager has done a great job with attracting businesses, and we have to build housing to meet the needs of those businesses. Otherwise, we're going to put ourselves in a, a situation where people will live elsewhere and maybe work in Esconaba. The property you have right now doesn't generate tax revenue for you. These developments would generate tax revenue for a long, long time, that would make it well worthwhile. So please consider being developmental partners with these developers that are seeking your approval. Thank you.
My name's Richard Lacoste, and I reside at 3001 Third Avenue South. The triangle of property being considered for sale was designated explicitly for public purpose, and it was accepted with a full understanding of that condition when it was deeded to the city of Esconaba, excuse me, for the cost of $1 in 1972 from the state of Michigan. Shortly thereafter, the citizens living in the area near this property petitioned the city to designate it as a park. There was a lot of back and forth between the city, city council, and the planning commission over the next two and a half years. And at one of the city council meetings, prior to this issue being resolved, there was a question posed to the then-city attorney, and that question was, what would the consequences be if that triangular parcel was needed in the future for some other purpose? And the city council, the city attorney stated, and I quote, "It could very well require a vote, require a vote of the people." After all the back and forth discussions, that matter was resolved on April 21st, 1977, when the question came to the city council for reaction. City council went forth and voted with full knowledge of the consequences to designate this property for recreational use in accordance with the planning commission's recommendation, and I quote from the minutes, establishing this parcel of land as a park. I know you have a legal opinion regarding the selling of this property, but I strongly, but along with others in the community, we strongly feel that once this property was designated as a park, it became a park right then and there. And therefore requires a vote of the citizens to rescind, rescind that decision. As you're fully aware, parks and cemeteries cannot be sold without a vote of the citizens. If you want to sell it, then by all means sell it. But I think that before you do that, you should live up to what the spirit of the city charter states. That way it's transparent, it's democratic, and the citizens will make a choice that would be unchallengeable in court. If they agree that you should be able to sell it, then by all means sell it. Setting that aside for just a moment, there's another thing that's perplexing, and that's the price. Why sell it for less than half of what was offered when a daycare offered a couple of years ago to buy that property for $115,000? And finally, if this parcel is indeed going to be sold at some point, then open it up to the public, let everybody know it's for sale. Or perhaps divide it into lots and give the citizens of the community the opportunity to purchase them. It would certainly ease the concerns of the community and the people that live in this area. Thank you.
My name is Janice Mills. My house is the last house north on 32nd Street. I was approved to purchase the city-owned property by the city council regular meeting on November 16th, 2017 for $25,000. Since that time, I have paid the city an additional $6,000 for my share having the, the road paved. Before I purchased the property, my insurance agent asked about status of the property north of me on 32nd and 3rd Avenue South. I contacted the city and was told the property was deeded to the city for use only as a park. A few weeks ago, I witnessed four employees of the city and another man waving his arms having a meeting on the property north of me. A few days later, two unmarked trucks pulled up on 3rd Avenue South and 2nd Street at nine o'clock at night. They got out of their vehicles. After a while, I heard loud talking, talking, mostly F-words. I went outside and I saw a man lifting up the manhole cover on 32nd Street and saying, "What's the F?" in full words, if you want me to say it, I will. "It's only five feet down." I said, "What are you doing?" And he said, "We are working on a project." And I said, "What project?" And he said, "You don't need to know." So I left it like that, and it was after nine o'clock at night, and I went in, and I just thought it seemed suspicious for, for two guys opening up a manhole cover on my street after nine o'clock at night. And then I realized the man that I was talking to was with the four city employees in the meeting the few days before that. On Monday 18th, I got a notice from the city, this right here, highlighted in my mailbox, not addressed to me, not stamped, but just in my mailbox. And I just laid there, and so I looked at it, and I thought, "I'm just finding out about this meeting, and it's on Thursday." So I thought, "Whoa, it is a done deal," when I read everything. I did not understand because of the land deeded to the city for a park, and how could they do this? You leave land to the city for a specific purpose, and then they just do something else with no input from the public? Further, if this is approved, the traffic situation needs to be addressed. At present... Okay, I just want to show this. At present, if you're on 32nd Street, and I live right here, okay, and you're going around, you're going north on 32nd Street and going east then onto 3rd Avenue South, sometimes the way it is, the road was configured, cars quite frequently end up in closer to the other lane, and then people that are coming, that are going west and heading for south to 32nd Street kind of almost miss each other. And I see it happened a lot. That's why I'm concerned about that traffic problem, because it's a problem even now. And I guess the only way I can explain it, you'd have to see it to believe it. In closing, my message is to the residents of Esconaba. If you deed your property to the city of Esconaba, make sure you have specific instructions. Otherwise, they're going to do what they want to do. And thank you for letting me have this time to speak.
Good evening, my name is John Anthony. I am a citizen of Esconaba and a member of the Electrical Advisory Committee of the city of Esconaba. Just would like to speak briefly in support of items number five and six on your agenda, which is the Energy Waste Reduction Plan. A few comments if I may. First off, I'd like to note that Jerry Pearlberg was very thorough and diligent in his investigation of the options on this program. And the Citizen Advisory Committee really discussed all aspects of it. We had a lot of back and forth, presented many questions to him, which he answered to the satisfaction. So in looking at it, I think the advantages of this program include many for the citizens, the residents, the businesses, and the ratepayers and the city. Namely, this program will address a few of the maybe shortcomings we've had in the past for this program. It'll provide increased promotion of the program, education of the program. It'll provide greater ability to consult with customers, especially for the more customized or large-scale or elaborate projects such as industrial and commercial applications. And then also too, this program, this being presented to you tonight, would include processing and payment to the customers to cover that effort for you. I'd like to note then, we certainly did discuss that this program does incur administrative costs. But we also felt that, or I felt that the program that is used and useful is better than one that is not. So this includes the resources to do that. Also would like to note that this is a mandated program that is put in place. No one likes to see extra costs involved on the utilities, including me, including all the ratepayers. So it's really especially important that we get the most out of any program that's put in place. So with that, to get the most out of, out of this program, to have it best benefit the ratepayers, the citizens, the businesses, all electrical users of Esconaba, believe that the Energy Waste Reduction Plan put forth before you tonight is the best course of action. So with that, thank you for your time tonight and your attention, appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Judy Owens of Esconaba, and I'm one of the owners of the Old State Development, also work with Statewide Real Estate. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk in regards to the Stone Brook Development project that we have proposed. And this is just one small perspective of what I'm going to talk about before the meeting gets going. And it is how Stone Brook condominium project can help the public and in, in any age group of adulthood, when it comes to what 25 housing units can do. So this project is more than just a construction development. It is an investment into Esconaba's future. Stone Brook condominiums will provide jobs for our local tradespeople, local purchases from suppliers while keeping dollars circulating right here in our own community. This means a stronger, more secure jobs and a healthier local economy. Beyond the impact, economic impact, Stone Brook addresses a very real housing need. The new condominiums are designed for buyers looking to downsize into one-floor plan, low maintenance living. When a local resident purchases a condo here, what that will also do was open up another home for sale. And typically, when a retired couple is selling their home, it's a family home, it's, you know, they've been raising their kids, and they're ready to downsize. That home co's on the market, and who's buying that home is typically someone who's bought their first-time home, started their family, and are ready to move up in size. That opens up the next home. That first-time home buyer had lived in that house, made improvements, and now that first-time home is ready for the next person. And that can be your, I've sold many homes to single people, a newly married couple, or sometimes, you know, unfortunately, it could be a widower again. So those first-time home buyers in this type of home is very much needed to open up again. 25 condos in Esconaba is really going to have a huge impact on the resale of homes. And so when we're looking at something like that, it is, the condos are going to be very aesthetic-looking, I mean, they're going to be very well-made, they're going to be very well insulated. And again, is for any age group, it's not going to just be retired people. But overall, more likely, it will be the retirement people who are buying these condos. And if you think about that, they're still in the family home because they have nowhere else to go. And they are not at the age where it's time for assisted living yet or other care facilities. So they really want to stay active, they still want to stay in a home, but yet at the same time, they may not want the two-story home anymore with the basement with the utilities down there. So I think this program, this project will be a big win overall, not just for us who are investing huge amount of money into Esconaba, but also for many homeowners, being able to get into their first home. Our project timeframe, so you're like, when are these houses going to hit the market? Our construction timeframe for these condos is two years. And I already have 10 very interested people already locally who want to buy. So when we're building 25, will we have 10, which will open up 20 houses, resale houses? Or will it be closer to 15? I don't know yet, because we haven't even started advertising yet. This has been word of mouth. So I think in the end result, it's going to be very good for Esconaba, and it will be very good for new homeowners. Thank you.
Charles Westerberg. I'm a lifelong member of this community, although my home is outside of the city limits. My concern is lack of parking in the next two blocks here. We have parallel parking, and with all the streets torn up. I'm a member of the Elks Club, and if we put angle parking for the next two blocks, it will allow more parking and it could have handicap parking spots. There are no hard handicap parking spots down in the next two blocks. Now, the Hereford Hops down on the other corner, they have a big parking lot to the west of them. The Eagles Club has a parking lot behind them with entrance egress through the, through the lodge. But our Elks Club in the next block here, we only have the front door to come in and go out. There's a parking lot in the back, and people have to walk all the way around the block to get in. We have some handicap parking spots for people with handicaps in the front of the lodge, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Further public comment at this time? We have one public hearing scheduled for this evening. Item number one is second reading, public hearing and adoption of ordinance number 1314, residential B ordinance of 2025, planning and zoning.
Administration is requesting city council to consider approval and adoption of ordinance number 1314, residential B ordinance of 2025. And just to summarize, this, I believe, unanimous approval of the planning commission was resident-led, it's exclusively, I believe, all residential homes currently zoned commercial. They were concerned that they wouldn't be able to modify their home, it's not compliant, or if there was a fire, that they couldn't rebuild. So ran through the process, and we are here.
It's time we'll open up the hearing. If you wish to comment on this item, please approach the podium. Close the hearing. Motion to approve adoption of ordinance number 1314.
Support.
Discussion. Ms. Weiser, please call roll.
Councilmember Dubor?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Bocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Flock?
Yes.
Mayor Yama?
Yes. Moving on to unfinished business. Item number one, approval, sale of city property, six lots on South 32nd Street, city manager.
So I did bring the council counter offer to the potential buyer, and they weren't able to make it tonight. The project manager is away from the area. So he did send an email just kind of describing what they're trying to accomplish, and I can read kind of the meat of that to tell everybody at least what their goal is here. But they did mention, with trying to accomplish some level of affordability, and new construction isn't affordable, just to begin with. Of course, the cost of lots part of that. And they had told me, in all the communities they're working with, Esconaba has already at the $20,000 per lot by far the highest development cost because of the lot price and because of the amount of fill, especially in these lots. It sounds like there's other communities that are heavily discounting lots to try and bring housing in. And I would remind you, the $20,000 per lot is consistent with the dollars per square foot of our last several sales. So it's not necessarily a discount based on what we've been doing. But what this home builder is trying to accomplish, he had said, "We are targeting a price point that is obtainable and covers the middle market, which is currently missing in our communities. Custom homes are costing upwards of $350 per square foot if you include the land. Our homes will be in the $200 per square foot type price point, including land. These homes are that, these are homes that teachers, police officers, et cetera, can obtain and live out the American obtain and live out the American dream of owning a new home. We do not intend to compete with custom home builders, folks who can afford $350 a square foot. We'll continue to go that route and hire our local home builders to build their new home." Again, this fills the middle gap that is currently totally void in our UP communities. So they're trying to, what I've described, as to build as affordable as possible a family home without major tax subsidy because most missing middle programs right now involve either MISH, the TIF, or some sort of grant to get there. So certainly, still won't be a cheap home, but it will be as affordable as a new build can be under their model.
I do have to say, I appreciate them sending us a better presentation and explaining in detail much more of their plans, which definitely opened up my perspective on what their plan was to do on that. So.
Is this the same developer that built the home down at the end of the street near Third Avenue, different one?
This is Moyle Construction, so they are a larger construction company of Houghton. They actually did the terrace addition, and I believe they are the contractor down here on the flats. Before they started doing home construction, they just exclusively did commercial. I actually had talked to them before they made this foray into single-family to try and just communicate housing needs in the area. They went downstate to look at some other model communities that have started doing this at a little bit of scale, and that's what they're trying to replicate here. So a long-storied contractor, but they are new to single-family.
And they would put in sidewalks? I know boulevard trees used to be required. I don't know. I believe they still are, but not many people follow through.
I was very clear about the 18-month build requirement as well as sidewalks. That is something that we are enforcing the ordinance to a T on right now.
So they won't build one and wait for it to sell before they start the next? They'll just keep going?
I would think they'll probably have to. Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Just a moment.
Sorry.
I was just going to say, this is a rare opportunity. When was the last time an out-of-town developer came to Esconaba and wanted to buy six lots and build six houses? So I feel that we're privileged. I feel that this is a huge opportunity, and I feel that it's also going to spur other opportunities for other developers to come here when they know that a well-known developer like Moyle is interested in our city. So that's going to spur other, it's going to have a snowball effect. I'm convinced of it.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the property, six lots on South 32nd Street, for $120,000.
Support.
Further discussion on this item? Swizer, please call roll.
Councilmember Dubois?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Flah?
Yes.
Mary Emma?
Yes.
Moving on to new business. Item number one, a resolution rescinding a resolution made April 21st, 1977. City Manager.
City Council will consider a resolution to rescind a resolution made April 21st, 1977. So I guess just to summarize a little bit, some concerns have come up regarding a public use restriction on the deed, and that was also evaluated by the city legal team and also the state did confirm that the way the deed is written is actually intended for the city to be able to sell this, not a forever restriction. So the resolution is really just looking at reversing the action from the 70s. And part of that is really considering what a, what a resolution is and to what level is that binding on a future council. You know, this is different from the gas plant sale, for example, which came with a very clear voter restriction, and is why we're going on the ballot this November to take a look at that. So the resolution does go through many points very clearly, and there is a memorandum that was released as part of this to explain in a little more detail what was looked at, what was considered, and ultimately, what constitutes a park. And from some of the people that have called me, I think to, just to reassure them, the framework used to evaluate this would very clearly tell us Veterans Park, Royce Park, Ludington Park are all very clearly, many deed restricted for park, but very clearly used as a park and would require a vote. So this isn't, I don't think, a pretense to selling off parks, but really, an evaluation of a single property. And according to, you know, legal opinion, council does have a method to proceed here. And ultimately, it's up to the City Council.
I'll start off by thanking you for taking as much time as you did to look into this, contacting the state, getting a legal opinion, something that city managers haven't done for 50 years, even though others have approached the city to look at that property. It just goes to show the extent that you're willing, willing to go to bring development into Esconaba. However, I will say, for 50 years, people in that area have trusted the city, believed that this would someday be a park. When they were looking to buy their lot to build their house or looking to move into this neighborhood and saw that parcel and asked, "What is that?", they were told, "It will someday be a park." So just because we can or could pass a resolution, I'm not certain that we should.
I would like to thank you too, Mr. McNeil, doing the diligence that you've done in the research and looking on the backend that you did to give us a clear answer from both legal and state points. My other thing would be, you know, it's been there for 50 years, nothing's been done with it. Even the citizens, anybody could have proposed something to build on there, or "We want a pavilion, we'd like some picnic tables, we want grills over there." There's been no presentation that I've seen since I've been on council of any park development at the so-called land that we're talking about. It's been that way for 50-some years. So where, where's the progress there from the rec board to local community citizens, neighbors in that area? Nothing's been done there. So it's, it's an empty lot. It's a lot sitting there that has to be maintained, grass needs to be cut, I mean, there's brush, there's everything in there. Why not consider something that brings progress? And at this point, we have an opportunity to bring progression. And the housing has always been an issue that we hear on every survey we send out to the citizens. Every conversation we have is housing. How do we get more housing within this community? Well, we're limited on land, we're limited on lots, we're not having 20 developers knocking at our door right now, but we have a couple. And this opportunity brings us that ability to look at future development, to bring in housing. And like Mr. McNeil explained, and a resolution is not law, okay? Any future council that comes in can change a resolution that a previous council has passed. So I just wanted to keep that in consideration as my perspective.
I just want to say that, you know, I want to chime in with everybody else that you have done your due diligence and explained it extremely well. So hopefully, everybody understands. And you've assured us that we're protected, if you will, legally and with the state. And that seems to reel it all in for me. Based on our needs, our housing needs, and it's a wonderful opportunity. These people are taking a huge risk by putting their time and efforts and their money out there to fulfill a need. And we have a broad need for housing, and this fulfills part of it. And I think that this is only the beginning, and like I said before with the other lots, I think this is, it's going to be a snowball effect. I think that this is going to spur on other development, it's going to spur on other types of housing. It always takes, the first one takes the risk, right? And people follow. And so I think that this was a very difficult subject and that has been explored thoroughly. And I feel that confident on what you've done to make sure that what we're doing is legal and is protected by the state too.
And I would have to agree with everybody else. And so I'll make a motion to rescind the resolution made in April 12th, 1977.
Support.
Is there further discussion on this item? Mr. Boshaw?
To Mr. Dubois's point, there, there was a proposal. It never went anywhere to put in a nature park, just some parking spaces and some hiking trail and benches back perhaps 2007 or 2009, when another developer was looking at the property and was told that they couldn't have it.
It seems that in our recent history, we've had some unfortunate lack of proper communication from former administrative officials. I don't know that that can be necessarily forgiven, forgotten, blamed properly. It's certainly nothing that anyone in this room, including everyone here, has done or any mistake anyone has made. I'm aware that there have been approaches made in the past and they were told no based on knowledge that someone thought they had, who didn't do the kind of diligent work that Mr. McNeil did. Had that occurred, all of these circumstances could potentially be different. We may not be having that discussion this evening if things were handled properly. We are doing our very best at this point in time to be very diligent and clear-headed about things and try our best to make decisions that help encourage the growth in our community that I think most of you have felt and seen in the last few years with repairing things. And we've got some new developments coming in, and overall, it seems to feel like a more energetic city for a while instead of just a sleepy little town. It's pretty exciting, and when people come here from out of town, they seem awfully happy to be here, and they can't wait to come back. I have a question for you, Mr. McNeil. If nothing at all were to be done, what is the likelihood of that parcel being properly developed into a usable recreational park space based on our projected municipal budget for the next 20 years?
Unlikely. The, so the five-year rec plan, this property is identified on there as a potential future park. I can tell you internally, whenever we've talked about this, we've thought we have more demanding needs for the general fund right now, especially given cuts we've had for library, cuts we've had for lifeguards, I mean, we've had issues there, staffing, city hall, public safety, all over. I think a big element to consider is the parks we have there, I think there's two parks within a half-mile of this, being Bessie and the one by the track, plus the track itself. But another part of the answer is what kind of recreational area, what kind of park? If it was a nature trial with a few benches, that's fairly inexpensive. If it's a, what people visualize, a park with a pavilion and some equipment or courts, a restroom, you could easily get over a million dollars too on a park development. So depends how big it gets.
Thank you. Further discussion on this item?
Just like to point out that, you know, if we were to go down the road of a referendum, it's already too late to get it on the November ballot, as we all, most of us know.
Correct. Can you clue us in on what that process would look like so that everyone understands? If this were to be put on a referendum, what's the process like? What are we looking at as a timeframe and an expense? Because that does also come out of our budget as well, correct?
Right. I don't know what the expense would be, but we don't get the dates until next year for when things are due for what election. They're not out yet from the Bureau of Elections yet. So I don't have any dates when it would have to be turned in.
Okay. Further discussion on this item? Swizer, please call roll.
Councilmember Flah?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshaw?
No.
Councilmember Dubois?
Yes.
Mary Emma?
Yes.
Moving on to new business. Item number one, a resolution, I'm sorry.
Two.
Let me do this first. Maybe that'll help. New business, item number two, approval, sale of city property, South 32nd Street and Third Avenue South, City Manager.
A few updates, I think, since our last meeting, just that were property-specific. And I guess to summarize a little bit, there might be some new people in the audience. We did have an appraisal done on the property, some unique characteristics to it, there is no sewer there, and we're looking at over, well, six figures just to get sewer, which would not be in expense of the cities, it would be borne by the developer. There could be the presence of some unbuildable areas on the property, and it is a triangle that does present setback issues, and you don't have a true five acres that's all developable. It could be an option to develop lots there, but I think as we've learned with trying to develop subdivisions on our own, it can be a long payback or, in the end, maybe a net loss when you're thinking of running utilities, street, filling a little bit, grading around the street. Certainly, I think the napkin math would show that it would probably be a losing proposition for us. So the, the sale price does make sense, and just from the standpoint, to have traffic, that was, I think, maybe the biggest concern at the last meeting from some residents. We did find some guidance on what the traffic may look like for 25-unit condominium during peak hours would be 10 to 11 peak-hour trips. And this was from the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. We did do it for single-family homes too, which is a little bit higher, but one and a half cars per hour, or per 10 minutes during peak time, I think is the easiest way to visualize it. But I think that's it for me, unless there are questions for me or for the buyer, happy to answer.
My only brought up by a citizen, but also in the back of mine too, is if we're looking at, you know, we already rescinded the resolution, now this becomes land that potentially is available for development or for sale, why then are we not putting this up for an open bid option to other potential bidders? Because we just now rescinded the, the resolution, it now changes the way we move forward. So then my next thing, to be fair to any future developer or anyone that wants to look at development, open that up to a bid. Because it, to me, this is just my opinion, it comes across as we've already have a favorite or somebody came right away to where we're at where if we open it up to a public bid for a certain period of time, and then it comes to us to say, "What?"
and then it comes to us to say, what do we want to see developed there for the future to council or the planning commission? Might give us different perspective, and that's just my opinion on my end.
I would comment on the price tag. I believe I did before that, but we just sold six one-third acre lots approximately, so two acres total for 120,000. This is five acres with a lot of timber on it, which I'm sure is worth at least 10,000, I would imagine. Just picking a number, probably more.
Yeah, given the, all those lots that were sold, all have water sewer actually stubbed out past the curb, street already in. There's lower development costs on those. And Bill Marlowe did the appraisal. He's been doing appraisals in Escanaba for a lot longer than I've been here. Always thought he did a pretty decent job. It's hard to compare to single-family lots. I think to compare to single-family lots, you would have to look at, what if we put in water sewer laterals in a street and then compare it? And then say, okay, we want some equivalent number. But we would be spending a couple hundred thousand dollars to get to that point.
No one jumped to make a motion to approve this, and I believe council has the feeling that in the best interest of the citizens, perhaps we do have to put this out for bid, because it does look very much like we have a favorite. And we did not rescind that resolution arbitrarily, it came because there was an approach made. And I don't think anyone likes the way that feels. As much as I am very much in support of housing projects, because we desperately need them, and I think everybody sitting here also agrees, we need housing, we need places for people to live, so that we have professionals working here in all of the industries. I'm a big fan of professionals like doctors, because I need to go to them. So, we do need to have that, and I think council, everyone agrees with that. But I feel that at this point, it feels like it lacks transparency. And that's what I think I'm gathering the most from what everyone's saying, is it doesn't feel very clear. So, we may have to take a longer approach to this.
So, just for clarity, the manager probably can explain this, but the way I understand it is, is if, let's say, three people bid on this property, we are not obligated as a council to take the highest bid. We are obligated as a council to determine which bid and the purpose of the sale of the land is going to benefit the citizens the most. So, I think that we have to make that clear. And I'm right, right? That's, isn't that?
Correct.
Wait, yes.
The same thing we did down here with the jail property.
Optimizing the sale price is not necessarily the same as optimizing the public benefit. That's an element of it, but it's not the whole decision.
I'll make a motion to deny the approval of the sale of South 32nd Street and 3rd Avenue South, but open up the bid to the public for the purchase of that land. That vote right? To open it up for a public bid?
Do you want just administration to prepare a bid package?
Yes.
And publish it for?
Yep, there we go. So, I'll take a motion to deny the sale of the property, but direct administration to publicly post a packet for potential open bid. Does that work?
Can do that.
For how long? That's my question.
Depends, I mean, we know we have a bird in hand or two in the nest. I would say the bird in hand is we have an offer to build 25 condos. From my experience, I'm not a developer, but just working with developers, timing is one of the most important things, while labor is available, while prices aren't known, while interest rates are known. There's a number of factors. I would say to keep interest with the existing offer, I would not extend a bid for a very long time. Enough time for other parties to generate an offer and to do some diligence, but something that is too long likely removes the offer we have.
Does 30 days sound reasonable?
Putting out to bid, we might lose that offer anyway. I think that's very well possible. Be aware of that, but yeah, I'd say anything longer than a month probably would guarantee that we would lose the offer we have.
Is 30 days a reasonable amount of time to expect a different interested party to be able to put together a bid? Is that a feasible timeframe?
More than enough time.
How much time did you say, I'm sorry, 30 days?
And two weeks was too short?
I, I could put together an offer in a couple days, but certainly two weeks, I think, is enough time for somebody to get a professional involved, take a look at the property, and tell us what they want to do with it and what they're willing to pay.
I think if we went two weeks, we would still miss our next meeting. So, it would still end up being the beginning of next month. So, we could go three weeks and still meet the first meeting of next month.
Is that acceptable?
Then I'll put that within my amended motion of three weeks.
Ms. Weiser, do you have all of that?
Yes, pretty much.
Okay, we do have a motion seeking support.
Support.
Further discussion on this item? Ms. Weiser, please call roll.
Councilmember Dubard?
Yes.
Councilmember Flah?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Mary Amel?
Yes.
New business, item number three. Approval Boniface Arts Center Special Events Application.
Administration is requesting approval of the Boniface Arts Center Special Event Application. And this came in, it did lack a little detail of what the event actually is. And I did receive that this week. So, just to read what was sent to me, "We're excited to raise the roof of the Boniface Arts Center. The event is a benefit block party hosted by Players to Knock in the Boniface Arts Center to raise money for the damages done after the terrible fire this spring. Most of the activity will take place in our parking lot with a stage from the DDA, and there will be interactive stations spread out inside the building, as well as some fun activities in our front green space, which has a kids' puppet theater and seating. This will allow the public to see where we are at in the rebuilding process and have a fun time while supporting our fundraising efforts. We'll have a live band from 6:00 to 9:30 PM, food vendors, raffles, games, store prizes, and 50/50. This is a ticketed event that will serve alcohol. Our liquor license has been sent out for final approval. We would like the roads around the event to be blocked off for food vendors and the safety of our attendees. We have talked with our neighbors about the event to mitigate any impact this may have on their daily activities as well. The intention of this event is to bring the community together and raise money for the arts."
Full approval?
Support.
My concern is the road closure with the construction.
Yes.
Because we still have 1st Avenue South that is the main thoroughfare right now with construction going down. So, I do have hesitation with that being closed?
Yeah, I think we did discuss at the meeting, but in preparation, the setup time is only from 3:30 that day till 11 o'clock that night. So, it's not like a closure that's spanning a day overnight, several hours.
I'm just giving you my feedback, because as I am the GM of the House of Luddington, I already have difficulty directing hotel guests to get to my place. And now I have another avenue, I've got to redirect everyone. I just didn't know why they couldn't utilize the parking lot, and then closing that part at 7th Street, South 7th, and maybe reach out to St. Joseph and St. Pat's Church to utilize their large parking lot, so we're not looking at closing 1st Avenue South. That's just discussion, so.
Are they, is the, the street closure for, for the food vendors to park in?
Believe so.
Could they just park in the alley? That's directly behind the Boniface Building and attached to the parking lot, and not have to close that part of the street off at all? Could we close the alley?
Yeah, we could definitely propose a different closure and give them something to work with.
That is a pretty heavily trafficked street, even, even at that time of night.
I think in their drawing, they're looking at 1st Avenue, one block or half-block of South 7th Street, and then the entire alley.
And the entire alley, okay.
We would encourage more people to go to their event if they run into it. I think from 3:30 until 11 is, is very, you know, doable for people in town have been used to going down a street and having to turn and then having to turn again because of all the construction that's all over town. So, I don't think of, you know, whatever, eight hours of a, seven and a half hours of inconvenience is such a big deal. And especially because of the purpose of the, of the event, I think that we need to support them. They had a terrible thing happen to them, and this is what they want to do, and I don't think we should interfere in it.
Can we have them promise to tell people where the House of Luddington is?
I, I deal with the complaints, not you. So, I just think instead of a half-block of 7th Street, why can't they do the full block? So, it gives them an extra half. So, then we can keep 1st Avenue South open.
I hate to tell you this, but it would be strange for them to be having their party in front of a building that they're not occupying.
True.
All right.
So, I mean, the motion's out there, I just gave my opinion.
Wait. Okay, we have a motion for approval.
And a second. Manager can give them our concerns and see if they're willing to adjust.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. New business, item number four. Approval Traffic Control Orders, Public Safety.
Administration is requesting approval of the following traffic control orders. Read them off. No parking here to corner signs on the 1500 block and 1600 blocks of Sheridan Road, a yield sign at the intersection of North 32nd, North 23rd Street and 12th Avenue North, 25 mile-per-hour sign in the 1900 block of 17th Avenue North, a yield sign at the intersection of 26th Avenue South and South 22nd Street, no parking signs on the east side of 1,000 block, or the 1000 block of North 16th Street, stop sign at South 22 and a half drive and 18th Avenue South, stop sign at South 21 and a half drive and 18th Avenue South, stop sign at South 21st Place and 18th Avenue South, and stop sign at South 22nd Place and 18th Avenue South. And our new public safety director, Mr. Damon Smith, is here if you have questions on some of these orders.
Yes. All the stop signs going in, are any of those intersections going to be troublesome? Like posting stop signs on the North 30th and 3rd Avenue North?
So, 18th Avenue South, if everybody's familiar with the three cul-de-sacs, south side of the Gulf first, I believe there's only probably one house on every, the stop signs aren't gonna stop traffic on 18th Avenue South. It's those cul-de-sacs coming on to 18th Ave. So, there would, it wouldn't cause any concern back up traffic on those.
So, public safety won't need to sit there for several days and, like they did on the?
Gosh, I hope not.
On 30th.
No.
I have to say, Traffic Safety Board, you guys have been busy to come up with all of these, so.
Yeah, no, I think they saved these over a long time. So, I took this position and then they dumped the mummies.
Okay, wonderful. I'll just make a motion to approve.
Support.
Further discussion on this item?
I just have a question on Sheridan Road, 15th and 16th, 100 block. You're offsetting it on the corners, so people can come out of those on 15th, 16th Street, because there's so much traffic down there from the beauty salon and some of the other things that are going on down there, and the gym that's right there. That still needs to be set back, I think, a little bit further. And I feel bad, because there's no parking down there, but trying to come off of 15th or 16th, 16th Street or 16th Avenue to come on Sheridan Road, it's, you literally gotta be into second lane. So, if you just take a look at that, I don't, I, I think that we already talked with your predecessor before, or I did anyway. So, just if you get a chance, look at that, take your car, take a ride down there and pull out.
Would it need any further approval, since the no parking from here to the stop sign corner? If we decide to kick it back another 10 feet? Require any additional stuff, or can I have?
I say sure.
I mean, I don't know, Mr. McNeil, if he needed to give a little bit more, do we need to have come back to us with that?
I don't think we would have to. I think public safety and the city engineering department will go down there and they would, there might even be a state standard on placement of these. And I don't know if there is, but they would probably look, if there's any M-dot manual with guidance on it too. But no, I, the exact placement, I don't believe we would have to come back.
So, the other question I have in regards to that area is, why can't we park on both sides of the street there anymore? On Sheridan, 1500 block, probably 1600 block to 1700 block.
I believe the no parking on Sheridan is the east side only, by Castle's Barber Shop.
Right.
But you can park, oh, why?
Yeah, why, why, why did that stop?
I believe it was?
That was previous council, I believe, when that got passed, that was discussion on that. It was, it was a, it was a parking issue on that side, because there was, I'm trying to remember, because we had this discussion on this.
Is this something we could have you look into and come back to? Because this does not actually relate to the motion at hand.
Can I behave?
Thank you.
Yeah, if you want to maybe read.
Further discussion on this actual item? Ms. Weiser, please call roll.
Councilmember Dubard?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Flah?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mary Amel?
Yes. New business, item number five. Approval Energy Waste Reduction Plan, Electric Department.
Administration is seeking city, seeking approval of the Energy Waste Reduction Plan. This is a budgeted item for the '25, '26 fiscal year, and is required by the State of Michigan Clean and Renewable Energy and Waste Reduction Act, Public Act 295. Mr. Anthony actually talked about these items at the beginning, and explained them probably better than I can. But Mr. Perkel is here to offer a little more context on it as well.
Okay, so, brief history, the energy waste reduction was required under Public Act 295 for several years. In 2021, municipalities no longer had to run a program, but we voluntarily ran one. In 2023, the state passed a law that all utilities must run an energy, energy waste reduction plan. Energy waste reduction plans are typically the rebate program that we offer for energy-efficient appliances and, like for commercial, it'd be energy-efficient processes, whether it's pumps, refrigeration, whatever it may be, so. I do want to mention the, what John discussed earlier from the electrical? I do wanna mention the, uh, what John discussed earlier from the Electrical Advisory Committee. We did discuss this extensively and they did provide a statement. Provided that the city of Escanaba is not seeking to self-manage an EWR program, which is mandated by the state, the Electrical Advisory Committee recommends pursuing an agreement with MPPA's Retail Energy Improvement Program Project. So we've discussed this, um, probably since April or May, we joined, um, MPPA, mainly for the purpose of taking advantage of their energy waste reduction program. There's two requirements, the, the, these are the two agenda items. One of them is approving the plan. The state law requires that the governing body approve a plan by the end of twenty twenty-five, so. This is the plan. It's the one-page document with the colors and it's an, it's a list of the dollars and, um, kilowatt hour savings. The Michigan Public Service Commission approved this format, so it seems very simple, brief, but this meets the requirements of a plan. There's a lot of details on here. I don't know how much you wanna go into with the costs. Um, we can cover that if you'd like. So I, I will mention, the law requires funds collected within a rate class. For example, residential must be spent in the residential. Funds collected in commercial and large power must be spent in that, that rate class, so in commercial and large power. Um, we, we can't take funds from commercial and spend it on residential. And the, the law does require twenty-five percent of the entire program must help low-income households. So there's a lot of details. Um, if you have questions on this, um, we can cover those. It, it's, um, I guess I will mention, um, for the residential, we need to collect or we need, we need to fund a hundred eighteen thousand dollars and a hundred, a hundred eighteen thousand, a hundred thirty-four dollars, um, which is about two and a half percent of our res- residential sales. And with commercial, it's a hundred ninety-eight thousand, six eighty-one, which is about two point two percent of the, of the commercial and large power sales. Again, it's all required by the state law that was passed in twenty twenty-three. So. I guess I'll open it up to questions. Um, I'm, I'm, I could talk on this for quite a while.
Sure. So. Jerry, uh, the, the item that we're on right now is just, uh, regarding the plan itself.
Just the plan.
Is, is that an annual thing or we do it once and it's good until we rescind it? Are we locked in for a certain period of time?
So it, this is a four-year plan. If you see the columns, it covers twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-nine. I believe the law requires that we revisit or, um, review these plans every four years. That's why MPPA went with a four-year plan. Plus it made it more attractive to the, the company administrating the plan that they know they're locked in for four years. So it, it, it made it more attractive, but it is a four-year plan.
If you decide after two years to go with someone else, are we able to do that or are we committed?
So, yes, we, we do have an option to cancel the agreement with MPPA. But to do that, we need to make sure everything, everything's lined up with a new company. But yes, there is, there is an option and that, that's in the agreement, which we'll be talking about next. So yes, we, we could go with a new company if we wanted to.
Thank you.
But it would require a new plan, so there'd be a process to do that.
Motion to approve the energy waste reduction plan.
Support.
Further discussion on this item. Swizer, please call roll.
Councilmember Dubard?
Yes.
Councilmember Flah? Sorry, Councilmember Boshaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Flah?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Maryamal?
Yes. New business, item number six, approval, energy waste reduction agreement, electric department.
Administration is seeking approval of the Michigan Public Power Agency Retail Energy Improvement Program Project Participation Agreement. This is a budgeted item for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. And I think one thing to point out, kind of talked about it a little bit already. But part of our joining of MPPA for this project was to group several municipalities together so that there is a joint competitive bid. It's, I think it's with a provider we've worked with before, um, but I think even compared to the state-run plan, this plan is actually cheaper to administer and we believe probably going to be more effective. Since it's specifically what they're tasked to do, um, and they've done it before where the state plan is brand new. So that was the process to get to here. But again, we've been talking about this for quite some time and we talked about joining MPPA.
Motion to approve the agreement.
Support.
Further discussion on this item. Swizer, please call roll.
Councilmember Dubard?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Flah?
Yes.
Maryamal?
Yes.
Thank you.
New business, item number seven, discussion, feeding of animals within city limits, city manager.
So the memo in the packet, um, probably explains this best. And it does provide some guidance from, um, I think the DNR. We've looked at USDA, um, but the genesis of this is we've, every year we get complaints, often from the same groups of people, um, that people are feeding deer near their house, uh, feeding rabbits. Deer is most common though, and that the deer then are destructive to their gardens, to their plants. I know there's one example of a, I think a, I don't know if it's a pregnant doe or there were babies around and the deer was a little aggressive. But the gist of it is, uh, deer can be destructive. A lot of guidance and a lot of communities have said no feeding of deer specifically or, or certain types of feeding. At the same time, it's the UP and, um, some people seem to enjoy feeding deer. It's why they do it. So, uh, we've sent letters in the past saying, please don't, and here's some reasons maybe why you shouldn't, citing some of the sources, um, or even perhaps just bringing more deer can maybe bring more car deer accidents as well. But ultimately, sending a letter doesn't really mean anything. We have no enforcement ability and, um, we received more calls just recently and it got to the point where we said, okay, we'll just talk about it if it's something that we want to enforce or something that we don't want to enforce. So I'm, I'm not sure what calls are potentially made to council, but it does seem we maybe get ten calls a year or so on this.
I find it interesting that, uh, people complain that deer are getting in their garden. The garden's not attracting the deer. It's the neighbor that's doing what? Throwing a rotten carrot outside?
Yeah, I think, um, their complaint is mostly with certain neighbors who are maybe, uh, putting like a salt block out. Or putting a, a bait pile in their backyard. We have found some bait piles. But yeah, certainly gardens, hostas, a lot of different plants attract them as well.
As you say, it is the UP. I, I can see people putting out corn, especially during a harsh winter. I find it interesting that no one's come to the podium though, too. They're using you.
It, I, probably it might have followed a little bit. Um, I did tell them we'd be putting this on a future meeting in the near future. I didn't have a chance to connect, but, um, I did tell them if there's neighbors also agreeing this is an issue, bring it to us at a meeting. We could always wait to hear more too.
So do they want us to shut down the community garden by the airport? That kind of thing? Don't draw any deer into town?
I don't think that was their intent, um, but yeah, I don't wanna speak for them either.
Is there a suggestion on how this can be controlled?
Yes, there's, some of the sample ordinances, and I don't have them memorized, uh, were specific to certain types of feeding. It was, the, the nature of the feeding that they've prohibited is specific to bait piles or, uh, you know, very deliberate feeding of animals, not what I would call incidental feeding of somebody having a garden or plants that deer like. We could look at some ordinances and come back with some options. We don't have to come back at all.
I'm just like, where does it stop here? Next, no feeding the ducks down by the harbor. Next, no feeding the rabbits in your yard. Uh, and there's just so much that's just can snowball into a huge thing and that's, I just don't know where it ends.
It's already illegal to feed the geese and the ducks in the harbor. So I don't know how much they enforce it, but there's a sign down there that says.
What about the seagulls?
Fuckers, I mean, I used to feed them when I was a little kid and my grandparents would take me down there and that was fun to throw the bread out of.
There's a rooster in my neighborhood that wakes me up every morning. I may go look for him.
Really?
Well, there is.
Item number seven was discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think we've had some of that. I think it was very nice. If you could possibly resist from putting actual bait piles or deer licks in your backyard, maybe please consider the impact it might have on deer automobile accidents and it's Michigan folks. As a result, everyone's insurance rates. I'm sorry if it's eating anyone's garden. I mean, I've got hostas. They could come and eat mine. That'd be fine. But if we can resist maybe luring them specifically quite so effectively, perhaps that would be a considerate neighborly thing to do in our very small community where most of the time when we need help, we all work together and pitch in. But sometimes working together and pitching in means quietly just being a good neighbor, a good resident, a good citizen and considering others when we decide to do something that we like.
Well, you know, I, I, as a gardener, I can see how people, somebody who had a nice garden would be really upset if a neighbor next door had a salt lick and a bait pile there because that just, you know, that just encourages them. So, I mean, I understand that. So I guess that maybe we could pursue just to, just barely get into it or something, oh, you know, like you said outlaw, salt licks, certain types of, of bait piles or something like that without getting too carried away with it to reserve the UP and the, you know, the whole atmosphere for feeding animals, just to satisfy the people that are complaining?
I feel like we're already just barely into it and that's really all the further most of us wanna go into it, honestly. And this is close enough. Okay, we discussed. Thank you. Moving on to appointments. We have currently an application on file for the Board of Library Trustees, Greg Novacek. This is appointed by the city manager with city council approval, council.
No objection.
Mr. McNeil, please make the appointment. We have an application on file for the Electrical Advisory Committee, appointed by the manager with city council approval, Gabe Cluca.
No objection.
Mr. McNeil, please make that appointment. Thank you to both of those folks who have decided to step up and be part of these boards because it does take a lot of work and time and effort and consideration of everyone that lives here when you're making decisions, that you make remuneration to council and it affects all of us. We've said a lot of that this evening. But if you're feeling frisky and you wanna get involved some more too, you could be on the Historic Preservation Commission, which has one vacancy and that's a fun one, cause there's all kinds of stuff I bet you don't know about the city. There's one vacancy on the Housing Commission. And as always, there is one vacancy and two alternate vacancies on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Moving on to board commission and committee reports.
Top of the month, nothing yet.
Yeah, nothing yet for me.
Same here.
Ditto. General public comment.
Ed Legault, Executive Director for the Delta County Economic Development Alliance. I just wanna make a comment regarding the postponing or taking other offers on that property. We really had an opportunity where we kinda had the perfect storm. Longtime residents, longtime business owners pulling together to try to build something that the city critically needs. Using local financing, making a commitment to using local labor. We can't have a better opportunity than that, in my opinion. I think if there was other people that proactively wanted to do something with that property, they would have contacted the city manager to see what would have to happen to make it available. I would really have you do some soul searching about development because this is, this is a big deal. I don't know how patient these guys can be. They, their timeline is already two years away. We need the housing like today. So anyway, think about that decision and hopefully these guys will be patient.
I'm Dave Harris. I, uh, own statewide real estate here in Escanaba. I'm a lifelong resident. Been selling real estate for over forty years, um, and I'm one of the developers of this Stonebrook condominiums. You know, for about the last twenty years, we've probably had hundreds of people who have contacted our office and wanting to move to the area, very interested in condos. We've never had any condos in Escanaba. Very unfortunate. Most of those people moved to Monominee, Iron Mountain, Marquette, Manisteeq, and every little town that has condos from here to the bridge. A lot of these people weren't moving here for work. A lot of them maybe were summer residents or retirement. We've got a beautiful community. This project that we have has really got us well thought of. We've done everything. And one thing I'm gonna ask of the council, you have a lot of information from us. If you're gonna, if you're gonna solicit for bids, I would suspect that you, you're to hide that stuff and they don't get to look at any of our stuff that we've given to you guys. It's very important to us. We've spent a great deal of time, and Jim, I wanna thank you. We approached Jim about this and I knew there was gonna be some resistance and I knew that there was some things with the, that it was designated as a park. And I don't think, uh, I don't think we're lacking park space in Escanaba. Ed, I wanna thank you for your backing from the, from the county level, um, and Karen Moore for her backing for us. And like I said, and, uh, one other comment, um, just, Ron, there is no timber value on that property. Zero. We couldn't even get a, we couldn't even get a, uh, any logger to come in and take it for free. So thank you for your time. I thank for your consideration and I believe Ed's right. Yeah, three weeks seems like a long time for me, cause we're ready to go.
Hi, good evening. Kelly Vangenhoven, Delta County Commissioner, District Four.
I would like to take a moment to extend a note of gratitude to our local law enforcement, teachers, staff at all of our area schools who addressed the situation at the Escanaba Junior and Senior High School today. It was a highly stressful and or scary time for all those involved and you deserve the community's thanks and appreciation for handling this manner in a professional and caring manner. Thank you so much.
Further public comment at this time? Moving on to announcements.
Yes, I actually have something, I'm on MDOT's newsletter email list and I received something this afternoon that they're going to have a meeting in our council chambers on the 17th, is it? Right before our next council meeting.
Yes.
Regarding the.
US Two Reconstruction Project 2027, 2028. This will be the kickoff with public to raise awareness about the project. I think especially if you own a business on US Two, very important to go to. We will be putting some more advertising for the meeting out from the city, but we were asked to wait until MDOT did theirs.
Please make a note of that and please plan to attend this and encourage everyone you know to attend this so you can ask your questions and get them answered. There's a lot of information to digest about this, it is an extensive plan, there are going to be a lot of changes. This would be the time to ask the questions and bring opinions at this meeting. Please attend and encourage others to do so. Other announcements, other than the Labor Day?
Yeah, is there a very successful Labor Day event?
So we thank the public, thank all the brothers and sisters from local unions and.
And thank you to you guys and the Recreation Department for teaming up and putting that together. I believe the community had a nice day on our municipal dock. Seeking a motion to adjourn.
Great, have a good night, everyone.